See if she's out of the way. That would be great. Okay. Welcome to the the November 12th special meeting of the planning board. This is a special meeting held to work on drafting our answers to the city council requests for our end of year input or letter. And so before we get started on that agenda, the one agenda item of today, we'll go ahead and open this up for public comment. This is a public meeting. It was publicly announced. So everything we discuss here will be part of the public record and we're recording for the website. So with that, I'll go ahead and open up the public comment section of this meeting. And anyone who's on who would like to address us, please raise your hand in the participants list. And I'll just repeat that we do have protocols that we follow for virtual meetings that encourage people to be respectful. We're going to go ahead and skip over that today in the interest of time because I know you folks have heard this before, but please remember those things that Jean Gottes tells us every time when we have a regular planning board meeting. So with that, Cindy, could you unmute Lynn Segal and we'll hear from Lynn first?
Yes, Lynn, you should be able to speak now.
Yeah, it's it's really useful since we're on COVID now for the public to know who is at the meeting for any city meetings. It's just disruptive to be out there as the only person and without a community just because of a virus. This makes no sense. I know it's not your control, but you need to pass along this to the city council. Now, what I want to bring up the substance, and I have to bring this up at every open comment for every board meeting, for every city council meeting and waste my time and I'm tired of it. I need to know who's there. I know you guys are there, but I don't know who else is there. What is that about? Seriously, people, what is that about? The other thing I have to bring up, the substance of my discussion is what are you going to do in your letter about this last year and what you're going to do in the future? Or what needs to go on, you know, to the council? What are you going to do about an integrative process of city planning, including the carbon footprint of each person? And how much they're using up of our parks and recreation, our libraries, our water, our, you know, all of the things that it takes to run a human being in Boulder. That needs to be applied to every development coming before you, before you approve it and advise the city council to also approve it. That is called carrying capacity. Now, I don't know if you went to E-Town on the other night and saw this Dr. T. PhD in cosmetology, I guess, and propaganda. And someone from Minneapolis telling us how, you know, ruling out single family housing is perfect for Boulder. And someone from CU Boulder spouting the same thing, that this high density is the panacea. And talking about how, oh, it's going out to the suburbs. You know, and it's just sprawl. Try to do that with Aspen. I'm not saying that Boulder should be Aspen, but try baking Aspen out of New York City and see if anyone goes there. You know, Mark Wallach's solution to the folks at CU South to this problem is that we make Boulder so uncomfortable to live in that everyone leaves, and that's the solution. Is that what you want to hear from your top incumbent city council member as a solution for Boulder? I don't think so. Now, it might be hard decisions we're going to have, but they need to be based on the composite value and cost of a human being in Boulder. And I know I'm stating the obvious.
Be limited to three minutes. So if you could wrap up, that would be great.
I know you all know this, but I don't want to have to keep saying it. I'd like someone to at least respond that my idea is bogus, but nothing. So you're going to keep on hearing from me about it every single friggin' time. Thank you. Bye.
Thank you, Lynn. Okay, well, we will accept open comment from anyone else who's in attendance. If anyone wants to raise their hand. And if we don't see a hand, we'll go ahead and close the open comment portion of the special meeting. All right. Okay. Well, thank you so much, Lynn, for that input. And we'll, we'll try to work some of those ideas that you have into our discussion for our letter tonight. Thank you so much. So with that, I'll close the open comment and we'll go on to the drafting session. So for this drafting session, Sarah and Lupita have agreed to help us kind of start with the drafting. And so I'm going to be handing it over to you, Sarah and Lupita, to just kind of walk us through. And of course, we all know what kinds of technology challenges we have when we do this kind of thing remotely. So we'll all be patient. I know that the Charles is here to help us with the mural that we're going to be working on, and I'll do my best to jump in if there's anything I can do to help, although I wouldn't. I haven't actually used mural since we did this last year. So so it's going to be interesting. So thank you so much for volunteering this. So just as I'll just summarize one other thing, we have one meeting between now and when the letter is due on December 15. Or I'm sorry, yeah, December 15. So we can keep that in mind when we wrap up to see how, you know, maybe it matters in the next, in the December 3rd meeting. We'll, we'll have a look at the draft and try to finalize it kind of thing. So with that in mind, I'll hand it over and go ahead and get us started.
Okay, so Lupita and I came up with a, an agenda which is not particularly unusual. We're going to start by naming the objective of our meeting. Then I'm going to ask, we're going to ask staff, in this case, Charles, just to tell us what's already on the council's work agenda so that we don't spend time beating a dead horse if something's already on. Then I thought we'd go through each of the three questions and ask each person to explain the items that they put up on those questions, under those questions. And then do the colored sticky thing, which well, we may have to spend a little bit of time reminding ourselves of the technology to do that. Then we'll ask folks to to identify if there's some themes that have emerged over the course of our discussion to try to articulate those themes. And then a wrap up with timeline and next steps. So pretty simple. So I'll start just, obviously, the objective of the meeting is to identify our shared priorities to include in the city council letter for 2022. They asked us to just identify one item. My guess is we will identify multiple items, but hopefully we'll prioritize them in a way that is helpful to them. And that is our goal. So moving on to item two, Charles, what's already, I realize it's a new council, but there's stuff that's carrying over from before. Can you just give us some insight into what planning issues are carrying over?
Yeah, I'd be happy to. So the things that are currently in flight right now, I would say the major issues that are currently in flight would be use tables revisions, the site review criteria amendments, oil and gas, and the East Boulder Sub-Community Plan. And all of those projects are slated to be wrapped up by very latest Q1 of next year.
Q1 of 22. Is that right, Charles?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Sarah, you locked up there.
Q1 of 2022?
Correct.
Okay. So this new council is starting with a completely clean, we'll be starting essentially with a really clean slate.
That would be our hope.
Okay. All right, thank you. Yes.
There may be some hangover of the East Boulder Sub-Community Plan, just depending on whether or not there's major revisions into Q2, but our hope is to wrap up those four major council priorities by early next year.
Okay. Okay, thanks so much. Really appreciate that. Okay, so maybe what we can do now is go through each of these questions and ask each person, we'll do this each question by question and ask folks who to sort of talk out loud about the items that they put under, under each question. So let's start with the work plan items and I'm just going to go down based on who's in, who's in the list on my computer. David, let's start with you under our work plan items.
Sure. And just work plan items, or would you like me to talk through all A, B, and C?
Why don't we just do it by, by question? And is that all right?
Yep. Okay, so with work number A, I just kind of assumed we were going to try to make something trickle up to the top of the priority list that we could really highlight in a big way at the top of the list, since they're asking for one thing. But when I thought about it, I, I thought there's this theme, and that's why I had, I had my, all my ideas kind of circled. And the, the left-hand side kind of summarizes the theme, which is balancing Boulder's housing, supply, demand, equity, and affordability with evolving economic pressures. I think that we've seen a number of things that, you know, with, with the economic pressures that have caused concern that we're getting kind of a monoculture of, in our develop, in our large development proposals. I've heard a lot of concern about that. And I think that overlaps with, with affordability and equity. So I, I don't know, this is big. But and so whether we kind of can distill out what we think is the most important part of that, but there were five areas within that that I thought were interesting. The missing middle, which we spent a lot of time on in our retreat. Ownership affordability, trying to have our nonprofits like Boulder Housing Partners that we work with, be able to have more ability to do, to support ownership possibilities for affordable housing instead of mostly rentals. I also thought dynamic walkable mixed-use neighborhood centers could possibly fall into here because we really have seen a lot in the BC1, BC2 zones of how our current zoning does not necessarily give us the flexibility. We had to do a special ordinance for diagonals. So it seems like there's work to do even beyond the use table subcommittee work. The intensity, density, open space requirements should be examined to see if we are, we can actually achieve the vision that we have for neighborhood centers without doing some additional zoning changes. So I think that would be interesting. I don't know how well that could be shoehorned into affordability, but it certainly does overlap because we're encouraging housing in those neighborhood centers. Housing diversity, of course, the bedroom configurations, townhomes versus flats and that kind of thing. And finally equitable outcomes with, that will encourage racial and cultural diversity in our, in our housings. So that we, we become more welcoming community in general. So those, those were my ideas in number eight.
Okay, can I, thank you. Can I? Charles, I just want to come back to something. The use table revision. The, no, no council has even touched those. And now we have a new council with exactly one member who's been on planning board. So I'm curious if it's really realistic that the use table revision is going to happen in the first, by the first quarter of next year.
You know, it's funny you mentioned it, Sarah, because I was actually just going to pipe up. When I said by the end of the first quarter with regard to use tables, I was referring to just the the next phase of it, which is really just formatting and some mechanical changes to the tables to make them a little bit more intuitive. The work around 20-minute neighborhoods or 15-minute neighborhoods is going to extend on through the rest of the year.
Okay. Okay. And can I ask one more question? Which is, I'm sorry, I'm taking notes while, while I'm trying to ask a question too. As David is always reminding me, the use table is a use table. It's not the zoning table. So the, so will revisions in the use table ultimately require zoning changes? I would think it would.
Not especially really the use table. We're just talking about the uses that could potentially be added into existing zone districts. So other than that, we wouldn't be doing any tinkering with the zoning. And again, it's really to support the 15-minute neighborhood concept that was integrated into the last update of the comp plan.
Right. But if, if applicants can shoot, I mean, there's, there's this challenge of applicants. It's great to increase, expand the uses, but applicants don't have to, are not required by the zoning to, to embrace all of those uses. So I'm just trying to make sure I understand. So that's really helpful. Thank you. Okay, John, next, your thoughts on work plan items?
Well, I, I sent a sort of a rant to Cindy that I suppose is doesn't lend itself to putting in a little box on, on, on this mural. But my, my thought was that we are spending way too much of our effort responding to applications rather than move towards actually doing planning. And so I would like to see us devote more of our effort to to area planning and neighborhood planning so that the applicants know where they should fit in rather than applicants coming to us with a, a big proposal that we aren't really prepared to respond to except on, on almost an emergency basis. And I'm, I'm thinking the diagonal. So for me, I would like to see more of our effort devoted to those issues.
Okay. So yeah, emphasize the need for coherent area planning, particularly for large projects. That's just the diagonal redevelopment. Does that capture?
Yes.
Other items, or was that the?
Oh, that's, I, I focused on that.
Okay, okay. And I'm just doing this by how people appear on my Zoom. Peter, you're next.
Hello, everyone. The the piece of our last letter and the book we read for the last retreat, or maybe it was the retreat before that, it's all the last couple of years are blurred. But the idea that coded inequities or inequalities seems to be the, the node at the top of the network that seems to subsume, or a lot of what we talk about can be subsumed under that, we're operating under a rubric that if we were to begin identifying, or at least in some systematic way, pulling things out that the offending element that keeps bringing us back to something that we're boxed in, that we all agree we would like to adjust or change or talk about. And really kind of understanding what that might be, not proposing to have the answers, but just try and, you know, point of parsimony, how could we get the most out of each action? And if there are coded inequities, that I think would be a huge service to the community to, to use our role, our platform to at least shine a light on some of those things. And it could take many years to tease those out, but I feel it's something that would be it would be an admirable use of time and it would result in something that we all seem to care about, which is what is, what does this mean? And it may help us prioritize certain things since we can't boil the ocean, so to speak, and try to throw as many metaphors as I could in this one.
Okay, that's awesome. Any, any other items that, that you want to highlight for the work plan?
No, I can, I, 80% of what it seems we've been talking about the last few years, I could put under that category for myself. So I went with choose one or more if you'd like, but I figured I can fit a lot more under them because I'll just say that the environmental components that I care about are nested under that. So thank you.
Hold on, just taking a note. Okay. Lupita, you're next. If you are ready.
Me to unmute myself. Sorry. I'm in and out. Well, actually, perfect that I come after, after Peter, because my, my points were specifically about. Let me see if I can read it, because I submitted to Cindy. Of course, I have so many things open. Well, I can just tell you the gist of it. I think single most important thing to me is dismantling the racism that is so embedded in the city and the various practices. And I think that following what John said, I think that we really need to focus on doing real planning that includes the most vulnerable in our community in a way that can be held to scrutiny, because I think there's a lot of talk and then very little. And that combined with what Peter brought up, many times we respond. And we don't get to do the, the heavy lifting that we need to do, and we leave people behind on a regular basis. I think the issue of making this place welcoming is couldn't be more salient for me because right now I'm getting my house sold so I can get out of this town. And it is precisely because it's so unwelcoming. And I'll tell you when I decided that for sure I was going to leave, it was the day of my birthday this year. So if you remember that day, I want you to know what happened. This is what happens to people like me and people of color who come here and on a regular basis get attacked, whether it's with base, switch and bait, or bait and switch practices in the city about affordable housing, or, you know, being underpaid, you being sent to clean a building without being trained or protected, it doesn't matter. This is, this is what happens in this town, not to mention what we're doing to our young people where we protect, you know, aggressors instead of the victims. So it is just not good. And the planning board has one task, and I think they should be able to at least, at least do that one. And so I'm, I'm sorry, because my house, I have a showing in about 15 minutes. And so I'm still trying to get it ready so I can step out and continue the meeting from somewhere else because I couldn't get all of it done. So my thing is, if we can do something, focus on the so inherent, so long and entrenched racism that we have in this town who are through our practices. Every time that we select a new process and we don't want to go with affordable housing, or we listen to the people that want no affordable housing in this particular place, but somewhere else, we are participating in this racist system. Here is, I need to decline. So I'm sorry, but to me, it's very simple. If we cannot even do that, I don't know, maybe, maybe, maybe everything else is worthless.
All right, Lupita, thank you. Lisa, will you go next?
Yeah, I would just echo a lot of what I heard from other planning board members. Let me switch from staring at your faces to the whiteboard. So I just pulled and honestly, I could have probably edited these down. I was trying to respond quickly for Cindy because I was one of the delinquents who hadn't gotten my notes into her. I put environmental climate action and equity, which I do also see as very intertwined, as other board members have already stated. I also highlighted housing options, including walkable 50-minute neighborhoods, community benefits and vibrant, exciting neighborhood centers. And then where was my last one? And these are, this is all language from last year's letter. And then preservation, development of affordable and non-luxury housing, including smaller, medium-sized single-family homes, townhomes, duplexes, cottages for seniors, singles or couples, housing for multi-generational living. And again, I think getting more of that kind of housing in or preserving it absolutely is related to equity and environmental and climate action. Other things that I'll highlight, and I'm not sure, Sarah, if this, I don't know, I just think it's important to talk about. This is a relatively green or inexperienced council in terms of, you know, having deep experience serving on boards and commissions and kind of understanding how some of these processes work around planning, but around a variety of other things. So I don't know whether they'll choose to listen to us, but one of the things I see planning board and other boards being able to bring forward for them as they, you know, pursue some kind of big hairy audacious goals is some of the work that staff's already done and past planning words already done and we've done around like, hey, like this is how we think that you might be able to do that in a way, or here's like, how you might trial that and make it effective. And like I, who knows, you know, but I, I see myself as being, you know, somewhat middle of the road in terms of their, their areas, you know, where I'm like, yeah, if it's a major collector street, you know, and a major intersection, I wouldn't be opposed to seeing, you know, some slight increase in density around there. But I'm not, you know, like a huge fan of like the super tall buildings we saw go up in like the 60s and 70s. And I like neighborhoods like Mapleton and Whittier and even to a certain extent, Gosfro. And I'm not opposed to seeing some mix of housing types like that in, but I also don't want to see ordinances going in that actually allow like incredible increase in, in density. We start losing some old neighborhood-y feeling and so on. So not to ramble, but, but I see that there's some kind of a nexus there around equity and decarbonizing our building supply and making it easier for people not to have to drive cars and tricks transportation and along what I would refer to as gentle density or gentle infill where it's appropriate, or just a more diversity of housing forms. I'm thinking about housing, but we could talk about other built forms as well. You know, and, and I, I just had this slight degree of anxiety that I might be like, oh, we'll just like pass this giant ordinance that like allows all kinds of stuff. And it's like, well, is that really going to get the outcome you want? You know, because if you're looking for super cute, streetcar style neighborhoods, pre-automobile, it's just a different outcome than, than some of what we're seeing up around the city. So yeah, and, and I just want to make sure that this council and any future council, I, I'm going to be a little get on my soapbox. I think last council lost the plot on climate. I think they dropped the ball.
I'm sorry, Lisa, what did you just say?
They lost the plot on climate. They completely dropped the ball on decarbonization. I'm still mad about it. And I hope that that's something that we can bring forward with this council. And I do see it as very much crossing over the equity because we know who pays the cost. We know who has the highest rates of asthma and, you know, cancers and all of these things that impact. We know who has to drive the longest distances and can't live in expensive cities. So I don't know, I see it all as highly interrelated. I think you can put it under any number of headings and we can simplify it down. But those are the things that I think about with big overarching things that I hope this council thinks about and attacks in a smart way.
So smart planning. Rooted in reality, rooted in, in objectives, but also rooted in the reality of, of development. Yeah. Thank you. That's great. And George, your turn.
Yeah. So I don't have anything up here. I think, I think a lot of the planning board members already covered those things. So I'm not going to focus on anything. I particularly agree with sort of, and Lisa sort of encapsulated this too, around sort of the, the long-term planning and really getting out ahead of things. The one thing that, that I don't see necessarily up here that, that I'd like to speak to a little bit has to do with the demand side of the equation. So, you know, it feels like Boulder is, is very preoccupied and rightfully so around housing and providing housing. But I think people don't necessarily spend enough time on the demand side of the equation, whether it's you know, in CU South, that, that, that comes up to me as, as something that I think had the community spent more time on it, they might have been more attuned to the components of that proposal and maybe some things that are an unintended consequence of what ultimately happened there, given that, you know, you know, I think everyone was focused and positively and rightfully so on all the housing that would be created there, hopefully for the students and faculty. What was sort of less discussed and less focused on in the public realm was around this 750,000 square feet of additional space that when you look at the math, it's at least for me, pretty apparent that we may be increasing the demand side even, even faster than the supply side on that, on that particular thing. And I'm not calling out CU South to re-litigate it, I'm just saying that's an example where I, I think we can focus on as a planning board to make sure that equation is, you know, maybe more well-balanced. Another example of that is in the light industrial thing that we're, we're talking around 55th and Arapahoe. And, you know, the fact that, you know, office is included within the definition of light industrial currently in the city. And that, that may lead ultimately because those, those office rates are so much higher in the city than any other use in commercial space, we might lose some of the very light industrial that we're trying to preserve. And so I think there's, I think that, that it's incumbent upon us to sort of make sure we weigh that side of the equation because I think it's as important as housing, but because it's not directly housing, sometimes there's less conversation around that. And I don't know if the community is paying as much attention as maybe they should be around that side of it. And I think as council gets into it, that's something that we can inform them of too, because we're going to get a lot of proposals for additional Class A office, et cetera. And we just need to make sure that, that is balanced. And that goes back to sort of everything else that Lupita talked about around racial equity and inequities and things that may be exacerbated by that side of the equation. I focused only on that because, because I think everyone else did a really great job of putting up the other stuff, otherwise I would have focused on that too, but I just want to bring that up. That's it.
George, can I, is it legitimate for me to raise this as the jobs-housing balance? Or is it, do you feel that that's too, too much of a surface?
I, I, no, I, I mean, I think that encapsulates it. My, my only concern about that is that, again, I just don't know how much airtime that side of the equation gets in Boulder. And it feels more important, it, it feels to me like it's an area that should be paid attention to more. Because I think it, it so directly impacts housing and what's happening in our city. So, yes, I think, to answer your question, yes, at a, at a high level, but I think it, I think it needs more detail behind it.
So, my, mine are all what everyone has already said, so I won't repeat. And what, part of what I'm hearing, and I don't know if other folks are hearing this, is I'm hearing sort of three threads already. One is what we think the city needs to focus on, what we think we ourselves need to focus on, like some, some frameworks that, or lenses through which we might look at applications and our processes, and that I'm sort of hearing all three of those things. Not, that doesn't mean all of them will end up in a letter, but I, I hear us talking to ourselves too. I don't know if others are hearing that same thing.
Yes, indeed.
Okay. All right. Let's go on to item two, which is policy and process concerns. And this time I'm going to start with John.
Okay. I think some of, some of the issues George just talked about could fit here too. But I think that the policy process concerns that pop out to me are, are really associated with our, how we operate in terms of responding to, responding to applications before we have done appropriate planning and consideration of where we want to go. And this includes issues such as 15-minute neighborhoods and, you know, how realistic they are in many cases. But we, we should have some, some thoughts about that before we're moving applications ahead that will have a huge impact on, on our range of options. So, so this goes back to my comments previously, that, that it's a process where we're not looking at the big picture and getting in front of applications before we're, we're dealing with them. The other issue is the degree to which we are responsible for the economics of various issues in housing by permitting, permitting increases in, in density and development, thus leading to increases in the price of land because people expect that they are going to be able to build a project that, that will lead to much more profitability. So it's a, it's a vicious circle that we are involved with, that we need to be aware of.
Can you, can you restate that? I'm not sure that I understood that last point you were making.
Okay, the, the point is that land prices are closely linked to expectations of development. And by increasing our flexibility and what is allowed in certain areas, this leads to increased land prices, which then means that various projects become unaffordable unless that certain restrictions might be relaxed. So it's a vicious circle in the sense that by our attitudes, we are causing land prices to, to grow.
So.
Thus limiting the range of possible projects that we would like to have. And, and this is, you know, again, the diagonal is, is a great example of this. That land has been owned by the owners for, you know, decades. And all of a sudden, we were faced with a project that was not financially possible unless we relaxed some of the considerations that they had to deal with because the expectations of what would be built there caused the land prices to go up so much. And so this is why it's so important for us to get in front of these applications and be very clear and have some discipline about what is expected to happen in, in certain areas through area plans and neighborhood plans.
Thanks, John. I may come back to you on, on that for more clarification when we're drafting the first draft of the letter. Peter, you're next. About policy.
Thank you. It seems that like we often stake out ground around a concept that we never get around to dealing with and talking about because we're not a policymaking body, I get that. But I tried to sum it up and restated my thought here. Does density improve environmental and social equity or not? Can't we get organized around this pivotal question? Because there are arguments on both sides, yet we're, no one seems to be using any rigor in the discussion and it quickly becomes a, an emotional exchange when we're, you know, an educated community, some would say one of the most. And so it seems like, again, if we could pick a few things and, and really run them down to ground and utilize the skills and intellect and the, what we're all blessed with in this town and and that would be a topic that I think would be a watershed moment because it would allow some folks to get to work instead of, you know, the distraction sometimes of banding about things that, you know, for example, I have heard, but can't substantiate. So that's, that's, it seems to incorporate, encapsulate a lot of where the issues come from for me, because I want to know the answer to this too.
And are you comfortable?
There is one, sorry.
Are you comfortable with the possibility that there isn't necessarily going to be a clear answer?
I was about to say, as I would like to answer, I said, as much as there is one. But I just feel like we owe it to ourselves and the community if we're going to be one of the bodies that's going to keep passing this around on camera in front of the community that perhaps we could put some guide, guardrails on the discussion and, and pick some things and say, okay, no, that piece, we're going to agree that that isn't work and, and we'll agree that one does in certain cases, or there's an environmental piece because there's a congestion, there's a roads component, there is a economy of scale, there are pros and cons of it. But just, you know, digging into it a bit, figuring out what we can, what we can go for and not.
I think that's really helpful. Peter, thank you so much. Lupita, are you there? All right, we'll come back to Lupita. Lisa, you're next. Wait, wait, no, Lupita back.
I'm sorry, I'm like going around because now I have the person in the room. And I have to, I'm going to have to step out after I speak so I can find a place and probably connect with my phone. So forgive me, but this sort of came in.
Do you want us to come back to you so you can catch your breath? And what would you like?
Well, I, I, maybe I'll listen, I'll, I'll listen and catch my breath. Lisa has a calming effect to me.
Okay, all right, we'll go to Lisa.
I'll try to be calming. It's very nice. I don't know, I don't know if I, I am always coming to everyone, so thank you, Lupita. I think I sort of already hit on it and I don't want to be too repetitive of what other folks have said around policy and process. I think that there's a lot that we can do as a board and also that we can kind of send up to council in terms of our focus on policy and process. And I, I think that's both in terms of how we make, how we handle decision-making as a planning board. And also the ways that we highlight information enough to council. So to my last point about council being super smart and highly engaged, but maybe not quite as steeped in some of the processes that, that guide our decision-making and even to some extent, I know the CIO will handle it, but even legal concerns that happen. I think something we can maybe do for the next year or two, as we're working with this new council, is to just be very specific about like, you know, we, we follow these guidelines and principles and how we are informed and how we do our work and, you know, bring that forward. So I think the, the specific topics that I see as policy and process concerns have already been covered by others, or I kind of prematurely covered them under work plans, so I won't highlight that. Stuff around missing metal, housing, climate, sustainability and so on. I think that's all in there, but in practical terms, I think when, when we go to council to report out on what we've done, or even when we choose to do that versus just like having staff bring it forward, that there just may be some opportunities for planning board to be a little more specific about why we've done, what we've done in a way that might be helpful to this council if it's information they're interested in here.
Okay, so that's super interesting, Lisa. I've been thinking a lot similarly that sometimes our decisions seem to get lost in translation up to council. And maybe one of the reasons why the last council was constantly revisiting our decisions, which was kind of frustrating. I mean, under, it's their right, but it's, it was also kind of frustrating. So, coming up with some tools or a tool or two that might allow us to really clearly explain what, why we reached, whatever decision we reached might be a very valuable asset.
And I think as, as you just said, Sarah, ultimately they're the elected officials, they're the elected representatives, and so they're going to make whatever decision they're going to make. But, um, but yeah, it just hasn't always been clear to me. And to be clear, I haven't always watched council meetings, so maybe they totally did get it and they were just like, no, we don't agree. But yeah, I always worry about people making a decision that I'm like, well, but do you understand like why we didn't go that direction? Or, you know, why, you know, and, and sometimes they reverse stuff and it's been like the side that I voted on, whatever. But, um, yeah, I just want them to understand how we got to where we got. And then if they're like, nope, still don't like it, fine, but I don't want them to just be like haphazardly getting rid of stuff.
Yeah, that makes a lot of sense. And I'm looking at your, the purple box here of incentivized preservation and development of affordable housing. I think actually that goes into the work and items, does it not? Wait, wait, you're muted.
Sorry, um.
It's the.
I think it depends on how you conceive of it. Feel free to move it wherever you would like.
Um, okay, so this technology, um, Charles, can you move that? Lisa just did it, thank you so much. Perfect.
I'm like covering other people's stuff, sorry guys.
It's okay, we'll figure that out.
It's tiny, tiny font now, sorry.
We can always move it back in, but, um, okay, and, um, I just want to see if we have in here in the purple that, that comment that you just made, which we don't. So maybe we could add a box, I'm sort of asking someone to add a box that just says, articulating board rationale for decisions clearly to council.
And even maybe going to council more often, especially when it's a split decision. You know, just, just sending someone who we trust as a board to fairly represent both sides and not be too partisan or whatever side they happen to vote on. You know, and just explaining this, this is how we got where we got. Because, yeah, it just seems like some of the stuff has been, and again, like some stuff I was like, yay, they're reversed, like I was on either side, whatever. But there's also in stuff where I'm like, eh, like what did council do? And it might just be nice to have a physical presence in the room for some of that.
Okay. Lupita just asked me to send her up. Lupita, do you still need the link?
Yes, because I, I have to step out of the house now, so I had to connect with my phone and I couldn't find the link. I had to go to the website for the planning board website to be able to get the link. So it's always easy if I just go to the email and link with my phone once I get outside the house.
All right, I'm going to forward it to you right now.
That'll be great, thank you so much. Sorry about that, guys.
It's okay. All right. Okay. So I can't, that's, okay. Lupita, I'll come back to you while you get yourself settled, okay?
Yes, thank you so much. So let me log off from here and then I'll get back to my car.
Okay, great. George?
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll quickly kind of seconding what, what Lisa was saying. And I, you're kind of bridges between our policy stuff and board engagement, right? From the standpoint of, you know, council is often looking at these things or things are even put on their consent agenda. I mean, I go back to just, just a recent thing where we had a, we had a unanimous vote with planning board and somehow it was still on the consent agenda and was, you know, we were, we were pitted almost against staff in that position. And I think having John being there to represent at least planning board's position was helpful in that. I also think that, you know, something that Lupita has, has said before, which kind of resonated with me is, and this kind of goes more to policy and processes, that, you know, this is not the welcoming committee, this is the planning board. And it kind of dovetails back to what John was saying around sort of long-range planning efforts for Boulder to make sure we get the real desired outcomes rather than just a reactionary place. That's a big lofty goal. But I do think as a planning board, you know, we should be steeped in sort of everything that's planned for Boulder in the next 20 to 30 years and really understand what we want to accomplish as a, as a, as a community and a board and maybe put some force on to that. It might take a few years to get there all the way, but I, I think that that would be insightful as this board continues to really, to, to really, to really put proper thought into it. And then I mentioned before, I mean, I think the idea of planning representative or, you know, whether it's a split vote or unanimous, you know, council is, is often acting on ideology without a lot of detail, the same, you know, we spend four hours on something that they might spend 10 minutes on in a meeting. And things look a lot different on the surface than they do necessarily when you understand all the detail and background behind them. So I think that there's some, some. So I think that there's some, some, some beneficial work that we could do there. And that kind of bridges between policy and board engagement. That's it.
That's very helpful. David, David?
For me, okay, so I actually put this subject in C, so but I'll go ahead and talk about it since everybody else is talking about it. Because I thought it was a board engagement issue, but we can put it wherever we feel like in the letter, of course. But I called it two-way feedback loop with council. I was, I just thought, you know, I think it is good when planning board is invited to address council like John did. And we don't do it as often as maybe we should to have somebody from a planning board. And, you know, if the chair, you know, is the first person to be, you know, potentially do it. But then, or maybe it could be set up that other board members also get a chance in rotation to address the council and summarize decisions by a planning board. I also wonder, and I don't know if there's ever been a history of having someone from council come to planning board to explain instead of, instead we hear through staff and staff does their best to summarize what the council concerns are. But it could be very interesting for us to get a five-minute summary from a council member from time to time. And I don't know of any reason why that wouldn't be useful. And honestly, when I think about it, we don't ever get a council member coming to a planning board meeting just to say a little something to us. So I just called it a two-way feedback loop because I thought we might want to highlight more interaction between council and planning board in general. And how we want to frame that, there's been a lot of things said, so I'll just go on from there. So we also in number B, then I had development project notification of all residents. This is something that we've been asking for for years. So I think this is a place where we can reiterate that we're still waiting for that. I don't think it's a heavy lift. I don't quite understand why we don't get that. Occupancy limits are something that have been getting attention, enough attention that we had an initiative that was fairly close but didn't pass because I think that the residents of Boulder would like to see it addressed by the experts rather than as an initiative perhaps. So I put that down just because it might be time now that we had a vote to, for, for the, for us to consider that. So in B, I know that's a work plan item, so in B I kind of put additional, a couple of additional work plan items. And then finally, Boulder is a model of sustainability. This is, I think, leveraging on what Lisa said, that I think that we need to make this, you know, kind of like we have said, this will look at everything through an equity lens. I think we need to look at everything through a sustainability lens. And that is something that could be improved. And I think that Boulder's imprint on the world as a, as a community that does, you know, that does things to reduce carbon impact and be more sustainable is huge for us. So, so I think that that's a policy process thing that could be mentioned.
Okay. Lupita's not back yet, so I'll go ahead and add my points and when she gets back. I, I think that the issues that I brought up, I see them as policy process concerns because they, they are either emerging or we bring them up or I bring them up. And, and they're just not a top, a high priority, but they, I think, need, we would benefit from there being, being. And the one of them is this growing number of applicants for for-profit student housing. And what, whether or not there need to be particular regulations or requirements, limitations, whatever, whatever on that topic. I was saying to someone last night that if you wanted to house the 27,000 students who are currently not housed by CU, you would need to build 27 of the proposals that we saw the other day at the Millennium House, which has approximately 1,000 beds. You'd need 27 of those, given the current student body. So it's, so that would be a lot. Not saying that that's what's going to be proposed over time, but it strikes me as a particular type of housing that probably would benefit. It would probably benefit the city to have some real thinking around what, what the implications of that could be and how we might want to guide that, those outcomes. So that was one issue. Landmarking, I think that, you know, one of the candidates in this election stated that landmarking was racist. Jerry said exactly that way. I think he's, I think, but it was essentially that when landmarking, when landmarking something inhibits the maximization, maximalization of development on a site. But there are benefits to landmarking too, including just a sense of community. And one of our jobs, one of the jobs of planning board, whoever is sitting on it, is to balance all of these different needs in the city. The developer cares about their bottom line and we have to care about all the other stuff that is not related to their bottom line. And I think, want to make sure that issues like landmarking are not dismissed as irrelevant to, to our processes. And then back to my free-range trees. You know, in our push for the urban form, we've created an entire, entire neighborhood over at Transit Village that is lax green. And I'm, I'm personally concerned that that's going to replicate itself in other developments. And it's, it's something I think we really need to, and I heard Jacob and Charles mention that there is a conversation going on with the, with the urban forester. I'm not sure that's her, her title, about long-term tree and green space planning. And I think that's very important and wouldn't, I wouldn't want us to lose that in the push that we've experienced to build. So those are my, my, my sort of policy questions that are not exactly work plan items, but sort of overarching concerns. Lupita, are you back by any chance? Okay, so Lupita's not back. She's got a lot on her plate. We'll come back to Lupita when she gets back online. So let's then go to, let's go to board engagement utilization, which I feel like we've touched on some of this stuff, but let's go through it anyways. Sorry. And let's start with Peter.
Hi. So we have a lot of conversation as a community about slate voting. This last time around, we clearly have addressed such things as rank choice. I don't have the answer to this, but it feels at times that, oh, and then the other, you know, anecdote that's always used is that planning board and council swing in opposite directions. And that's a disservice, if that's true, that's a disservice to the community because you've got seemingly, we have this seeming two-party system in play in Boulder, which it's all just silly, ridiculous to me, really. But we have this situation where at times we all, it doesn't seem as effective as it could be. And it doesn't seem like it's doing the service of the community that it could be. And I don't know the solution. But when we have these slate voting and majorities and minorities and then appointments and then it, it, it doesn't seem to work as well as it should. And I think it's a tragedy. And I think it's something that, again, if we can shine a light on and don't know the answer, but if there's some way that, one, we need more applicants for the planning board. We have not had as many as we should the last few cycles. And I think we need to, that could be the fix right there. So I guess I tag on to that, you know, how to work with council to make sure that the openings and application periods are that, that, that system, that what seems to be a little broken to me right now is fixed. And then that may resolve part of my concern about how to deep politicize these appointments. Again, it may be just, you know, yelling at the wind, but that's my thought. Because again, I feel like that is a, an apex point that then affects a lot of the other things that we're all here to do together.
Right, if people, if the community doesn't trust that everyone on, on this board, for example, are trying through their various lenses to do what's best for the community. It, it undermines trust in government and in the ability to reach productive conclusions, productive outcomes.
Yeah, if the public thinks we're just there to heed our masters that appointed us, which isn't true, then that's a problem. And then people won't apply. And then we have a bigger problem.
That's really important. Thank you, Peter. Lisa?
Just to go off of that, and maybe I'm particularly sensitive to this. It's a rough time to be in public office or to be like serving on a board. I mean, you know, if you look at what's happening to school boards and, and just what everyone's been through the last two years, like I think it's a hard time to recruit people into public service in general, which doesn't mean we can't do a better job, but, you know, hopefully not like in a partisan or whatever way, because I agree, I'm super annoyed by the whole slate thing. And I hate when people are like, I'm voting this slate. And I'm like, well, stop doing that. You're being annoying. But I'm like, pick the people you think will do a good job. I don't like the whole two-partyization of the, whatever. But, you know, I think we can all maybe just constantly be thinking about, you know, who, who do we know from our work lives or personal lives or otherwise, who we think would be wonderful people to have on planning board or on another board? And, you know, encouraging people to apply while being sensitive to the fact that it's a significant time commitment. And, you know, I think we're somewhat insulated, but it can get really nasty and unpleasant on a lot of boards. And I can't really blame folks who are a little challenged about whether they want to put their energy toward that right now. But yeah, think about who you know who would be good.
By the way, I see Lupita's in as a, as attendees. Maybe she needs to be promoted to panelist.
Good. All right, John, I'll do that right now.
Sorry, I haven't been keeping track. George, I'll get to you. I'll wait for Lupita to get online and then I'll come to you, George.
Be right back. Someone's at my door.
Okay. Lupita? Lupita, we see your name, but we don't see you and you're muted.
Hi. John speaking. Can I, can you speak? Can you hear me now?
We can totally hear you. So, well, sorry that you're having to work from your car or wherever it is that you are. But well, can we, we're talking right now about the board engagement utilization question. Can we, can we get your input on that? And then, once we've gone through everyone else, we'll come back to your input on policy and process concerns.
Yes, actually, I was listening even though you couldn't see me. Yes, the whole issue of engagement is being, I think, somewhat of a, an important topic for me because I think that oftentimes we get to hear very one-sided opinions about the projects that come before us. And it is very difficult then sometimes to make decisions that involve entire city when we only hear very, very vocal few. And, and therefore, we end up with, you know, decisions that are skewed in terms of what benefits the city. So I think we should work quite a bit on making sure that the voices that make it to our board are truly representative of the city. And I, you know, I, I recently attended a meeting in a different city for, for a different topic, but I was actually very impressed to hear the number of, you know, members of the community that spoke. And to me, it was refreshing to know that in other places this is happening. So I think that it is possible, we need to work on it, to facilitate it, to make sure it happens. And including people, at least in this particular case, people speaking in a different language and being translated right away, which makes all the sense in the world. And thankfully, the city now has finally a, you know, a communications person who can help us with some of that. But I think the bigger challenge is really be welcoming enough so that all of the sectors of a community, which is very segregated, actually can come regularly and give us their input so that we can make decisions that are more reflective of everyone and not just the select few that do make it to our meetings.
Lupita, that's really helpful. Do you, does that in your mind fall under board engagement utilization or under policy and process concerns? I just want to make sure I'm putting it in the right place.
I think with the engagement piece, because I think the board itself, we need to be able to find ways to make ourselves, you know, better known within the communities and earn the trust of people to know that if they come and speak to us, they are not going to be, you know, ignored. Or, I mean, just recently, we had a group of, of citizens that came to speak in favor of one of our projects that
Wait, Lupita, we just lost you. Lupita? Lupita? Okay. Am I, am I frozen? I can see John moving. Okay.
I think, I think we lost Lupita's audio probably because of a cell phone issue.
Okay.
And Georgie seems to have been abducted, so someone needs to make a call.
We lost Lupita. We'll come back to Lupita and we'll wait up. Lupita, are you there? You're, if you are, you're muted.
Oh, my. Okay.
Okay, so we had you, you got to, we heard you through, the board needs to find, to be able to find ways to make ourselves better known to the community.
No, it's not. It's, there's Wi-Fi.
Okay, can the faceless go in there? Get my backpack out. I think I'm stuck.
No, we can hear you.
I need to put up now.
Lupita? Lupita? Okay, so we'll come back to Lupita. Hopefully she can hear us. David and George will hopefully come off the the alien ship and return to us. David, why don't you go ahead on board engagement utilization?
Great. So in line with what I think Peter and Lisa said, and I also had a comment architectural expertise and balance of expertise in general. So basically, that kind of falls in line also with maybe coming up with a good suggestion on how the selection of board member process could be improved to be more inclusive, accessible. So I like that. I would caution about wringing our hands too much about politics because I think that could make our, our letter kind of get into the, into a realm that we really don't have full control over. So let's see, see if there's a crisp, a crisp recommendation we can do that would do our part to address that. But without necessarily, I mean, slate voting is just a little bit outside of our purview, in my opinion. It's a discussion that I think could cause unnecessary negativity when we could really focus on how to make board selection better and focus on that domain. So that would be my, my idea there. I do, we do have an initiative in place to do, to look at how boards can interact. I think that we had a couple of good meetings where TAB came, but it's not, it hasn't been finalized. But I think that we could consider giving encouragement to finalize that so that we have an idea of how increased board interaction can help us with things like concept reviews. And I already talked about the two-way feedback loop with council. So I think those were my ideas.
Um, George, I'm going to come to you in a second, but, um, Charles? Okay, um, can uh George, I'm gonna come to you in a second, but um Charles, where, what is the status of the discussion about uh board interactions?
So we completed a discussion recently with council about uh tabs involvement. In concept plan review as well as uh design advisory board. So. Uh council has the authority to refer concept plan applications to transportation advisory board. Um, planning board does not, planning board has authority to refer projects to design advisory board as well as council.
And but was, was the discussion with council about? The idea of more of the combined meetings like we had on East Boulder Sub Community Plan or about having a, a representative?
I think it, it was about, um, first of all, the authority and ability to, for council to refer projects. Um, and then a conversation around doing that more. So what we committed to do at the staff level is remind council that when we're doing concept plan. Um, whether or not we feel like projects are a good candidate to uh be referred to TAB and then um. Uh talk with them about whether or not staff will refer something to dab, whether or not it's required to go to dab or whether or not planning board recommended that something be referred to dab. So I think it was just more about general um referral authority um and about doing it more.
Okay, that's really helpful. Thank you. Uh David, I just wanted to clarify for all of us sort of what the status of that conversation was.
Yeah, and I, and that, that is really good to know where that's going and if we do want to provide a comment on that um in this section. And I don't know if it's necessary, it seems like it's, it's being worked on, so uh but I uh, yeah.
Okay. Uh George, I promise I'll come to you in a second, but I want Lupita to be able to finish. Um Lupita, you had said the board needs to be fine, able to find ways to make ourselves better known to the community and then you started to describe a meeting. Where folks had talked to us about a project and I just wanted you to be able to finish that thought.
Yes, yeah, so I'm sorry because I was kind of parking lighted, I think I lost signal, but now I am in a, in a Starbucks sitting outside, so I should be able to be uh, you know. At least stable for a little bit, I'm so sorry.
Don't worry.
I told my son, I've done this and worse, uh, because I work from all kinds of places, so it's just a matter of making. Get to the, to the stable place, but I just had too many things thrown at me at the last minute where people were supposed to show up at my house to do things and they didn't. So uh nonetheless, what I was mentioning was about a meeting that I attended recently where that we had quite a number of people from the community speak and then it it went very smoothly. Uh, including when people spoke Spanish, which I thought I was, you know, very excited to see because I think that we were to have this in our own planning board and we had a welcoming environment. Uh, the engagement will be much facilitated and then we will have, as you mentioned earlier, a wider range of people willing to apply to be in the board. Um, I think it's no surprise to me that we get the same sort of people applying for these positions uh because they have an interest. Some of, you know, some of my colleagues here have very legitimate and and important skills to bring to the table to help us make good decisions. Uh, but we also get people who have personal intentions like, you know, uh David has brought over and over again that he thinks that people have agendas. Well, I'm sure there be people like that, I don't necessarily know who those are, but.
Excuse me, but um, what are you referring to Lupita? Can you um explain? I I don't know that I've ever done that.
Look, I'm not gonna get into the discussion again, you can go and listen to the, to the meeting on my birthday.
Okay, so I'm just gonna, I'm gonna not.
I need to finish my statement because uh you have spoken enough. So what I'm saying here is to make this uh committee welcoming, um. There are different things that we can do in order to get a wider range of opinions and members so that they can enrich the solutions. Um, before us. Um, and so same thing is gonna happen with, with council. Uh, and as you know, we just went to those elections, uh I think we can predict how some of the sessions are gonna go one way in the near future. Uh, and so we gotta entice people to wanna do this sort of work. And to me, the way to entice people is to make it welcoming, to make it, you know, like even if you have this agreement. People agree to disagree, now that you are going to be harassed in front of everyone and to may feel unwelcome. So that's the opposite we wanna do. So to me, if we can keep those so basic principles, I think it will be very helpful and in benefit of the city. That's the, the kind of like the gist of it because. I think that engagement is a big part of it, but also in the policies that we have and how we get to people so that there are a wider range of people comfortable coming to us. With their ideas, even if they disagree um uh with, you know, what the board may say. Uh, that it is okay, it is a sign of civilization to be able to disagree and still be able to work together.
All right, Lupita, thank you so much. Um, uh, I'm gonna go to George uh next and then I think. Uh, who, who have I missed? John, okay, so George and then John, I'm sorry about that, John.
I'll, I'll keep mine pretty brief. Um. Uh, it, it's interesting, we talk about the politicization of planning board because um and might be my own naivete, I actually, I've had a. I've had a bit of a, of a different experience than maybe has been verbalized and so I'm looking at it from my shoes, not from everybody else's. But um, one of the things I've been pleasantly surprised with since joining planning board is we do have a diversity of perspectives. And i- in in general, they tend to be, I, I think we have a pretty respectful environment overall, there, there are certainly circumstances where that hasn't been the case, but overall. Um, and and I think what's interesting is many of the things that I've gone into, you know, early on, thinking that they would be controversial. I, I find us agreeing even from all our different perspectives and where we came from, more often than not. And I think that has to do with us really digging into the detail of a plan. Because we're, we're, I, I believe we're all coming from it, from the, from the idea of the intention uh of of the best for Boulder. And often those things might, some things might look diametrically opposed on surface, which may be one of the reason why we get some different decisions from council. But often when you dig into the detail, I think we get closer to a similar outcome of um even through our diverse viewpoints. So I think as it relates to board engagement and utilization. If we're able to better explain what planning board's purpose is. And and how it works, because I often, even during my appointment. Um, there was a discussion around how we should have an architecture on, architect on the board. And um, I, whether or not that's a, that's a good or a bad thing. Uh, to me, it seems less relevant because architecture isn't, design isn't necessarily planning. Planning has a tremendous amount of components, but often on the surface, people, when they think planning board, they think an architect. Um, and I'm not saying, I'm not saying that that's not the right thing to do, to have on, on planning board as well. But it, it appeared to me going through that process that um some people were talking very surface about planning board and weren't really understanding the depth. Of what we do. And so to the extent that we can help explain its purpose and um. And get better representation when our decisions are being put forward, I think that will help depoliticize it because um as it relates to the appointments, because I, I. I actually don't find this board terribly politicized, I think we have a lot of different viewpoints. But I think, I think by and large, we come to very similar outcomes, there are some disagreements which are natural, but I, I, I think it's pretty healthy right now. Um, so I'm hopeful that we can explain the, the purpose of this board better and be, be really heard as it relates to that. To somehow be helpful in the upcoming appointments that will come in years to come so that we get, you know, the right kind of people that are respectful to each other and. And uh a- as I think we have now.
Thank you, George, very much for that comment. Um, John.
Yeah, thank you. I, I have to say, I don't disagree with anything that I've heard on, on, on this topic from, from all of my colleagues here. But there's a couple po- additional points that I, I'd like to make. One is that uh, I think particularly uh. Uh, Peter and and David sort of acknowledged the uh, the concern with slates and the election and so on. But my perception is that planning board is supposed to be apolitical. Uh, it. That's the whole idea of appointing rather than electing members to the board and I think that generally speaking, we have been, I think that's. That's pretty successful. We're supposed to consider issues and projects on, on their merits, not, not how they fall into some. The opinion of one slate or another, and I think that's gone pretty well. So I, I, I don't, I just like to make that point. The other aspect is that I remember uh several years ago, and it may be that only David and and Peter are, remember this as well. Uh, there were some, and this has to do with interaction with other boards and uh consideration of their thoughts uh on, on various issues. Uh particularly RAB uh had made a quite a, quite a bitter complaint that their thoughts weren't being appropriately considered by planning board in some of its. Uh, concept and and concept reviews and so on. And so in an attempt to, to address that, I've, I've been attending all RAB meetings. Uh, for the last several years and uh I, I think that was, although I, I disagreed with a particular issue that that. That, that was being raised at that point, I thought it was a legitimate concern that other boards. Weren't having their input in issues where they thought it would be appropriate. Uh, and I, so with respect to how we. Uh, interact with other boards, I thought the idea of having some liaison members appointed to. Either from planning board to show up at the meetings of those boards or. Or vice versa, or both is a good one, even though it involves a, a considerable time commitment. And it's one that I would like to suggest we, we. Move ahead with.
Sorry, my lights just went out, hold on. Um, thank you, John. Um. Uh, I would say I agree, I, I, almost everything that folks have said uh in this area um resonates uh with me. Um, and I, I, I also want to reiterate in particular what George said, I think this year, obviously we've had our bumps, but I think this year uh we've worked really, really well together. And um been uh able to um get to very good outcomes, even if they were overturned by, by city council later. But um, I'll speak specifically to the hard work that we did on CU South. Um, I, it was two very long meetings, not very much fun. Um, but I, I've certainly heard uh from. From um the powers that be that our hard work um really helped to um. Push the process forward in a positive way and I think we can all feel really good about spending fourteen hours in meetings um to help do that. Um. And uh. Let's see. Uh, I won't speak to the politicization, I think that um I appreciate David's point that maybe there's some way for us to frame out a. A position that makes a gesture to deep, to the fact that we are not meant to be a political board without bringing. Politics into, into whatever it is that we communicate out. Um. So um, these are all, this was all, um, I feel like we've touched on a lot of subjects and I'm wondering, as you all have been listening. There are, actually, timeout. So I think then in terms of the agenda we had set, the next step was going to be um sort of each of us putting our. Uh, prioritizing the issues that are on here. Um, and o- obviously, we've heard some additional topics. Um, uh, but I, I've taken notes, I actually was sort of court reporting, I think I've got everybody's. Uh, full statements on my, on, on my notes, so um it's not gonna get lost. I think maybe what makes sense now um is for us to do what we did last year, which was to try to um use icons and and put our icons on those things that. That um we think would be a priority. Um, I'm gonna ask uh maybe Charles with David's help to remind us of how to do that because I, I don't actually know how to do it. Sorry, Charles or David?
I'm sorry, Sarah, you broke up there for me, I'm, I'm experiencing internet issues this morning, can you repeat that?
Uh, I just thought that we might go now to um folks putting icons um next to the items that they'd like to prioritize so that we have a sense of where people's, uh where people are. Uh, what they'd like to um put first and foremost in our letter, um but I don't know how to do that with this um.
Gotcha.
With this technology, so if you could just walk us through how to do that.
So um, if you're in the mural board and you're. Above the yellow stickies on a work plan items, I have created a bunch of checkmarks for you guys that you can just drag and drop. Onto the items that you wanted to prioritize.
Awesome. And can I just ask one more question? Uh, when we're done prioritizing, is this a document that gets saved somewhere or should I just take a picture of it on my phone?
It'll be, it'll be saved and um my hope is that we'll be able to um publish the PDF to the uh, the board's website as well.
Okay. Okay, all right, so let's all take a few minutes to um all three of these items. Um, and if there's anything that hasn't, that you don't feel has been mentioned. Um. Uh, is, can one, can we felt, if someone, can you, yeah, if, if you feel something hasn't been mentioned or isn't on the box, that something that was mentioned but not on the boxes. Hit then to these, these green circles here.
Oh yeah, I, I put one on a green box, but um.
That's perfect.
While we're doing this, can I just summarize what I meant there?
Yes, of course.
So I was thinking, um, people might, I do, this is just an idea, there's a lot of concepts here that I thought, you know, people really like area planning. Uh, I wondered, you know, and there's a lot of, uh, I think the neighborhood centers come into um play a lot and affordability. I wondered about a citywide area plan for our neighborhood centers. Uh, where we go through the process like we do with East Boulder Sub Community, but we do it um applied to all of our shopping centers like Diagonal Meadows, Basemar. Uh, Safeway by the new uh uh development and Harvest House. So um that could, that, um, the nice thing about that is it, it is a, we know we love area planning. Uh, it could pop up to number one, I'm just throwing this out there because I think it, it could. It could be our one thing, because it, it does allow the city to work on all these cool things. And it uh also allows us to examine uh beyond use table, intensity, density things and uh envision what we would like those neighborhood centers to look like. Uh, so it, it, um, to me, it's, it's just an idea. So that's why I put that green thing there, because I thought it could cover a lot of these other things that we're putting checkmarks next to.
Okay.
Thank you, thanks for letting me.
I, I don't wanna put my thumb on, but I love that idea, I think, um and it's very much, I think, at least personally in keeping with what I. Reiterated, probably to the point of boredom in our um use table revision conversations, that those BC one, BC two zones are really. Wonderful opportunities for redevelopment in ways that are, can meet an awful lot of our. Advance a lot of our interests, our city's interests. Um.
No, uh, I, I am in complete agreement with this, but I'm just remembering what we heard from Jacob. Just a couple of meetings ago when I raised the issue of area plans and and he, I guess Jacob is listening now, but uh. He responded with a, a litany of the limitations of staff.
Yeah.
Ability and so on. So I think this is the time for us to talk about it, no question about it, and let council know how important we think it is.
He did also say that he hopes to have full staff, a complement of staff by the end of first quarter of next year, right, Jacob? Hello, Jacob.
John, you summoned me uh to panelist level. Thank you. Um, so the, the answer is, is yes, that we do anticipate to be more fully staffed. But at the moment, our comprehensive planning team, the group of people who do that work are still, you know, quite diminished in terms of capacity. We also lost one of our very capable planners to a nearby municipality recently. So we got to rebuild the team before we can really engage in area planning. However, our goal is to get that done hopefully by Q two of next year. So just know if um, if that's a request, we're listening, we hear that. I think there's not a, um, not a planner in, in the country who doesn't love the request to do area planning, that's the kind of work that we love to do. Um, but our, our ability to do it, it's gonna be diminished until we can get fully staffed up.
Anyway, now's the time for us to underline how important we think it is.
Yeah. What I'm not, let's see, there were some themes that came up that had to do with some processes. Oh, here, here. I see over here the appointments question. Just going to go back and look through my notes here. I mean, some of these, some of these are, are not repeats, but they're different versions of the same ideas. So if something doesn't have a check mark, it doesn't mean it won't end up in the draft letter. Because I think some of this stuff is, there's a lot of overlap. We just, different, different ways of saying some of the same thing. Can I ask another question? Maybe this goes to staff. I thought George's point about wanting to explain to the community what it is Planning Board actually does because most people don't deal with it unless something is happening in their neighborhood. Could Planning Board members ever go out into the community and talk to people? Or is that not as a way of, as a way of sort of demystifying or, or democratizing access to Planning Board? That's a question, I guess, for staff.
It's a great question, Sarah. To some degree, I don't, I feel a little, I defer to Charles or my, the staff who have been with the city for a longer period of time. I think that the, the idea on its face is, is great and is what really needs to be done, right? To help spread a better understanding of the function and purpose of the board. Those things, of course, are in the code. They are, as a result of being in the code, not well understood, but except by the few who, who actually read through those things and come through them. And the idea of demystifying the function of the board is, is really a noble one and I think is worth pursuing. In terms of how to do that, I think that's a conversation about what you all think is best in terms of how to do it. I do know that as a rule of thumb, the, the idea, as you all touched on before, with the appointed nature of this board is to try to keep the Planning Board out of political discussion and to keep you focused on what is truly best for the, the city in the mind of you as individuals and as a collective group. So we would want to discuss how best to do that, you know, to promote that thorough understanding. But I guess in short, the answer is that it's a noble goal and one that we would support you in doing. And I don't know, Charles, if you want to speak to the history of those kinds of efforts or if you're aware of things of that nature or how it might best, best work for the board.
Yeah, thanks, Jacob. You know, I don't think, I can't think of a time where that's ever been something that's been done. I, I can't think of a time where staff has had conversations, you know, in the community and a variety, different ways, just about the purpose and the powers of the board. So I think to your point, Jacob, I think it, it's a great conversation how we would want to, you know, get daylight to function.
Yeah, so I can just speak as someone who, whose first engagement with the city was through Planning Board. And it's a, as an outsider looking in, it's, it's opaque and complicated and frustrating. And I think we all hear that whenever a neighborhood is responding to a project that is in, under discussion. And I think we do, we want, we, it would benefit, it would benefit a lot of people, I think, if it was a little less mysterious and a little more. I'm not sure what more, but I think, I, I mean, I talked, and we all talk to lots of people. And I think there's a tremendous amount of frustration about city processes in general right now. And some of that has to do with the fact, you know, as Lynn brings up all the time, we're quite removed, everything we do is through Zoom. We're quite removed from public interaction. We're not actually seeing people there. I mean, there's a, there are consequences to the, to the Zoom approach, which we have to do, but it, there are real, I think, negative consequences that may be exacerbating the sense of frustration people have with the city, with city processes. And if there are, if there are tools that we could, that are at hand or that we could create to sort of demystify this and be more, more in the community so it doesn't seem like a, sort of like up here, you know, man behind the curtain kind of a thing. I, I have to believe that that would be a positive, that could produce more positive outcomes. It, and it's not about changing how we vote at all or the deliberations that we have, but just not making this such a contentious process. I think people get very, very frustrated and put off. And that's for people who already have access and feel completely comfortable coming to Planning Board to talk. As Lupita has points out, there's lots of people who don't feel that level of comfort and, and aren't going to engage unless they feel that there's someone who's there who will, who they know they are essentially talking to. I, I just think that we need to, I hope we can think about that. Yep, go ahead, Lupita.
You know, I, it occurred to me that, as you were speaking, that one way that, that the, the, the board could be, I guess, engaged more directly. Now, I have to remind us all that we're still in a pandemic. So a lot of the challenges that we had before, they were exacerbated by the pandemic. And so even in terms of what we, we were able to accomplish in the board and even with City Council and the city in general. So put that just as, as a reminder that we are in a neutral times. But in terms of things that we could do, I think that maybe taking the opportunity to do a little bit of teaching to the city in the sense, and I'm thinking really, like when we are in our meetings and there's an opportunity of a teaching moment, and this is really me thinking as a teacher, you know, it's a teaching moment for our community to explain things a little bit deeper in terms of the thinking that goes behind the decision making that may be happening, even in the frictions when we have and we don't agree on some things. But that takes a little bit of skill in the sense that identify the teaching moment and also see how far you can go with that just so that you expand that discussion to include the community in a way that is welcoming. Because they, as we do this better, the community will be able to understand why we don't agree always. And also will be more, I think, capable or in, engaged. And I won't say capable and not, nothing that they're not capable of in terms of understanding how they can contribute to that discussion. And they feel more empowered as they're also guiding the process of development in the city. To me, those things need to be built. They don't just happen. So we have to have that kind of environment so that people come in and they feel like, yes, if I speak, people will listen and that that conversation is going to broaden. And, and the, and the, I guess, discussions within the board. And I, I had a, an example early on when we had those big houses issues. I literally changed my mind in the board as I listened to the community. And I thought that was a very important part of the, being in a board, that you have to be open minded to, to listen to our, our residents that many times they have a legitimate, you know, concerns. And we need to be able to determine them and maybe connect them with their, their limitations that the board has to work with in order to make a good decision that for the city. So I'm just start, if there's something in there that can be done in the future in terms of, you know, small teaching moments just to discern, to provide some more guidance to the city to be able to help us make good decisions, I think that will be a good development from this.
Does anyone else want to make a comment or make any comments on this topic? So I'm wondering if.
Oh, Sarah, can I just interject?
Yes.
I just, on behalf of the board, we're, do a time check. We have 15 minutes left on this meeting at this point. So I wondered if we think we can get to the point where you need to be, Sarah, you and, you and Lupita for drafting, creating a draft out of this. I assume that the two of you will kind of go off and do a draft based on all of this input. And then we'll, you know, maybe like we did last year, we could pass it off to another couple of people to polish it up after our next planning board meeting or something like that. So just want to do a process check.
Great, I appreciate that. I think now would be a good time to sort of get feedback on themes that you all, each of you has heard. Because that'll help us frame out our, our, our. So taking all of that's up here on the, on the whiteboard and what has been checked or hasn't been checked or what, and what we've talked about, I'd love to hear what themes you all have yourselves heard and would like to articulate. And Lisa, why don't we start with you?
I'm looking at all the check marks. I think the tricky thing is trying to put it all under one.
Right, and it doesn't have to be. I mean.
Yeah.
The, the, the value of hearing people's, what they've heard as themes is it helps us to look for through lines when we actually sit down to write the letter, the draft letter.
So I would say sustainability and climate were a major theme that I heard. I would say equity was a major theme that I heard. And then also the concept of missing middle, which I think can encompass some of the other things around walkable neighborhoods. And again, gets back to equity and climate change as well. And also is related to housing diversity, preservation of existing housing. All of that, I think, can be related to missing middle. So those are, those are three big things. Sustainability and climate change, equity. And then housing, particularly through a missing middle lens. And I guess a fourth thing is just how, how we communicate in both directions with council and how we communicate with the community at large.
Okay, wonderful, thank you. George?
Um, I, I'll second what, what, what Lisa said. I don't think there's a lot to, for me to repeat there. I, I like the way that, that David, you know, had put in balancing Boulders, housing, supply and demand and equity. I think if the environment was also in there, that would kind of encapsulate a lot of what Lisa said and what I, what I, what I agree with. And then the only other thing I'll add to, to Lisa's is perhaps, you know, really trying to figure out ways to, to, to promote what Planning Board does and, and, and understand it, not only from council, but also in the community. So.
Great. David?
Great, well, wonderful comments from both of you. And I'm sure there will be more great summaries coming up. I do think that there is a way we can, because a lot of these are aspirational things. But we, we, our challenge will be to distill it down to what council is hoping for, which is a work plan item recommendation. And so, again, I, I do kind of fall on this idea that if we, we could actually highlight a lot of these aspirations and then in, in the context of a work plan item that we could propose. And again, I, I do kind of fall on this idea and I'm just kind of interested in this of whether people might think that, saying that area planning process be, create a new area plan for our neighborhood centers. And that way, because if we, if we did that, we could, we could have verbiage around all of these other things that would say that this work plan item would take into account all these, all these other things. So it's just, it might, it's just in my mind away in that first part, in that first, the most important part of the question that council asked us to do, to really actually do a heavy hitting impactful work plan item proposal. And then, did you want us to talk about the rest of the letter or?
Sure, anything, any theme at all. I, this is.
Yeah, then I, yeah, then I thought that we could, that should be highlighted very specifically as the thing that they're really asking us for. And then there could be a paragraph or two on policy process concerns and on board engagement utilization. And under policy process, I think there's a, a good set of checked off boxes here that could be referenced and engagement. I think we, we talked about some interesting things. I just want to reiterate, just, I, I, I don't know if there was some misunderstanding about what I said, but I actually was recommending not to expand our discussion of politics beyond talking about how board appointments are done. I, I wasn't sure that people understood, understood that because I heard a couple of people say that, oh, Dave said this. But I, I certainly didn't mean to say that I wanted to encourage us to talk about a, a larger political controversy in Boulder. I don't know that that would serve us well. So I just want to make sure that, that I clarified that.
Okay. Thank you. I, that I didn't, I'm, if I implied that that's what.
No, I, I, I didn't hear it from you.
Okay.
But, but.
It's not in the notes, just so you know.
There, there was, there was discussion about it and I was kind of, my point was to try to steer us towards focusing on how board appointments are done. Especially in, in that context, but steer away from hand wringing about the overall political landscape of board. That's all.
Lisa's got her hand up and so Lisa, you must have a response.
Yeah, well, because I, I like what David just proposed around the area plans. And yet I also have a degree of trepidation about it. And I think what I struggle with is that I have this fear that I think is probably rooted in reality, that that may not make it onto the work plan. You know, just in terms of like what staff is still trying to dig out from after the last two years. And so I don't want us to lose some of the overarching themes and intent that might drive that as a proposed work item. And I don't mind bringing it forward, but I just worry that if they're like, oh, nope, not going to happen this year, then we just lose all the stuff that, that we were trying to cover within that idea of, of this neighborhood plan. So, um, yeah, so I, I, I don't know that that necessarily means that we don't put it in or, or if it shows up in the next few paragraphs, but it just worries me that we kind of moved something forward and they say, nope, struck down and then.
Well, can I, can I call it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I, I just, I, so, God, I understand that. But is there a better, I, I'm not sure I'm seeing these themes translate themselves into a work plan item, right? So I, so if there's a better way to get it into a way that it could be proposed as a work plan item, that would be really interesting.
I, I think you're doing a nice job. I think, I think I'm pushing back against the professor's assignment because I think it's a badly outlined assignment, but I won't say that to come. You know, yeah, but, but I, I guess, you know, e- even if we create it into work plan, I think having an intro paragraph and then like a summary paragraph and or something that says we're trying to hit climate change and sustainability equity, you know, and what's happening with housing. You asked for a work plan item, here's the proposed work plan item, and then sandwich it again. The reason we're proposing this is because we think you really need to be addressing bum, 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 you know, something where, you know, where, where we just kind of bring it home so that if they're like, oh, sorry, we don't have the, and I totally understand. I don't mean this badly to staff. Staff has been killing themselves for the last two years and getting a lot done. But it, it just may not make it on there, you know? And, and I want, I'm hoping that somehow we can get the themes and values that we're trying to move forward on there, even if they don't introduce it, you know, to their work plan.
So I, I kind of, everyone, let's keep going. This is making me do a lot of thinking, which will show up in, I think, the draft letter. So John, your themes?
Yeah, I, I, I agree with everything I'm, I'm hearing. I, I would, it, to me, it makes sense to present it in, in a way that makes it clear that we want to do planning. We don't want just to be dealing with individual projects and checking them off in concept, plan and review. So I think it's entirely appropriate for us to, to focus on, on the planning aspect of what we think needs to be done, which is, I think we all agree, area plans are a central element to that. And it's, it's not our role to think about what is realistic for staff to accomplish at this point because we've heard that there's hiring going on and that in a couple of months or six months, there may be a different picture with what is possible and appropriate. So I, I think we should, we shouldn't hesitate to, to mention the need for the area. The area plans for us to be able to do our job as, as we're assigned.
And I, I would say that that also gives us, I mean, there are other area plans that have been, I mean, I love David's idea. I, just let me put it out there, I love David's idea. And there's also been discussion about an area plan for gun barrel. And there may have been another one that just escapes my mind at the moment, but. I think it's a way, it's a lens, it's a, it's a. Tangible articulation of these many overarching themes. And David's specific proposal, which is for neighborhood centers citywide, is amazing. But, and, and we could also offer up other area planning processes or proposals as, so that. We decrease the risk that some, they're just gonna ignore. Our rec, our suggestion, our one suggestion. Okay, Lupi, no, Peter, you're next, sorry.
I, I second Lisa's. Points and as they were embroidered upon by Georgie for the record. And then I'll leave it at that, given that we have four minutes.
Okay, Lupita and then George. This is themes.
Discussing, um, comments, I think we mean all of these threads is something that. I'm familiar with, because this is usually how we establish, when we do research, we have to establish what the landscape is. With the appropriate citation, so you have to know what you're talking about. And so, bringing all of these different topics, I think climate change is one area that I think people think that is. Aspirational, but it's here, so it has to be at the center of everything we do. So is equity, especially coming out of this pandemic, actually, we're not out of the pandemic in Colorado is, you know, a, a, a prime example. How we're not doing very good scientific work. And I'll tell you why, because we don't have a best scientist in charge. So, the thing that we need to do is weave all these thoughts together. And put for a, a plan for the city and we'll see what they will do. I frankly, hope that we'll be able to do more holistic work in terms of development. But also in terms of justice, because we, we have not done it in the city. But I think we can at least give it a try and then, and then be proactive in holding people accountable. When we go back to the old ways of doing things where everything is a silo. Decisions or development should not be decisions devoid of forward-thinking to prevent. Climate change affecting our most vulnerable populations in the city. It's all connected. So we need to be able to do those things in, in, in one, stemming together, I'm happy to work with that. Sarah, to put all these thoughts together.
And finally, George.
I think most of my thoughts are already captured, I, I just do, you know, reemphasize sort of the idea of. I, I, I don't think it's necessarily aspiration, I, I hear staff's concerns, you know, sort of short-term. But I, 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 I think it's the right place for us to be, to really be looking at long-range holistic planning. As, as the goal for this board and then reinforcing education around the planning board. And making sure that there's proper engagement across council and understanding of our role and that. And that we, you know, there, there is a risk, right? I don't know if we necessarily put this in the letter, but there's a risk of disengagement of the planning board. If, if we feel like, you know, we're putting up recommendation after recommendation, after spending, you know, six, seven hours on topics. And then, you know, going through a, a ten-minute ideology that swings completely a different way without, you know, a deeper understanding. So, leave it at that.
Is there anyone who I did not give a chance to speak? Okay, so, this was awesome, we have one minute left, hopefully we can go for two. Thank you all for this amazing input. So, I, this letter is due to, due to council on December fifteenth, is that correct? Okay, David's nodding, okay. So. Obviously Lupita is, has a lot on her plate, and, and the holidays, Thanksgiving is coming up. But what I'm gonna recommend, what I'm gonna suggest is that Lupita and I will put our heads together between now and our next board meeting. Which is December third, and we'll draft something.
Actually, I'm sorry, second.
I'm sorry, December second.
I, I misspoke earlier.
I'm sorry, December second. We'll have something to share, which hopefully will, will be almost complete. You know, obviously if we completely missed the mark, you'll tell us. But we'll try to bring something that's, that's, that tries to capture everything that we took. Prioritize everything we've talked about today, and then on December third. Two more people can step up to take it over the finish line. Does that sound like a plan to folks? Thumbs up, thumbs up, yep, nods, okay.
One question, point of order, how is this delivered on that December fifteenth or whatever? I mean, talking about engagement, making sure that it's heard, and making sure that people maybe have the opportunity to ask questions around what this letter really means. Because it's gonna be pretty short and brief, right? And the idea of having, you know, in, in my mind, having a representative walk council through this, and then being available for questions, I think could be very helpful. And kind of in light of everything that we've discussed.
I'll just talk about what's been done in the past, and I think that's a good recommendation. I think what happens is that Cindy then forwards it to the planning board administrative staff. And then they bundle up all of the letters and then they get examined in the retreat in January, after the council members all read them through. So there actually is not a, built into the current process a way for planning board members to come and present it. But that's an interesting. Recommendation.
Two years ago, we decided on a MoneyPython sketch comedy approach that we're all gonna do.
I mean, I do think that that is, you know, the only way we can see what happens is to watch the video of the retreat, right? So, I, I don't know if we can kind of communicate through the. Charles, if, and Jacob, if, if you are so inclined to kind of try to find out if there's. An interest in having like some. Short presentation by, by the boards on their letters, that, that's kind of an interesting idea. It's not something that's been done in the past.
Good, Dave, I'm happy to, happy to find out what council wants to do in terms of receiving those letters, and I'm gonna be meeting with a few of those members today. So I'll see if I can get a response.
That's great, thank you.
Something about it, George, I think your recommendation is brilliant, and I think instead of asking around. We should make a request that this happened. It is not, you know, good ideas have to be pushed, not to be, you know, passed around and see somebody else, you know. Comes to terms, sometimes being ahead of our time is a bad thing, but sometimes you just have to pull everybody along. So I do think that the board needs to be more proactive and request an audience about this. Because in the past, it's been a one direction, we send a letter and then they do with it, whatever they do. But this time, I think it thinks that become much more urgent, and if we are eloquent enough that we can weave all of these important things together. That we can have somebody, and I frankly, George, I will volunteer you to be the person, because I love the way that you synthesize all of these things together. It takes skill to be able to do that. So we can start with the written part, but I think bringing all those topics together in a holistic manner really does take skill. And I, I will dominate you right off the bat. So, that's my point.
I, I appreciate that. I, I, I would say, I, I'd be happy to do that, or on behalf of the board, I think it would be helpful. And also, I want to make sure, right, that, that this is not polarizing, right? Some people might have perspectives that I vote a particular way, and so I think, you know, from, from the perspective of balance. And making sure that it's heard, I would, I would like to, to, to have like a two-person type of response. So that, so that people understand that this is a unified view, and that it's not a colored view one way or the other, I think would also be helpful.
Well, that's, I think that's great, and I, well, let's bring, let's revisit that on December second. And we'll get some feedback from staff about what, what they think, and whether it's as they're planning out the city council retreat. Whether there's room for that or not, we can put it in the draft letter and take it out if it turns out that it's. That our, our recommendate, that recommendation is not, it's not doable, given the format or the timing or whatever.
Can I make a suggestion, Sarah? If we were to have a draft that Cindy could send out to the full board, say on the twenty-ninth. Of November, four days before the meeting. And then if board members could be encouraged to turn on track changes and make all their comments. And then, those could be, then we could, on the third week, or the second, I'm sorry. We could all kind of summarize our, our reactions, it might make things more efficient for the next editors. Because, because it, it does seem like for open meetings, we really need to have a time where we can talk through our reactions. So I'm just saying, let's not see it really like on the day of the meeting, but give, give people a chance to make their comments for three or four days before the meeting. Would that be doable?
I think that's brilliant, and let me just ask a question of Charles or Jacob, either one. What's already on our agenda on December second?
It's actually wide open right now.
Okay, is there any way we can, is there any way we could request that you try to keep it wide open? So that we don't end up doing this in matters at eleven-thirty at night?
At this point, it would be too late for us to add agenda items anyway, so if the board wanted to use the, the evening to continue to talk about the letter, I think that'd be fine.
Great.
So the code change ordinance isn't on? I believe we moved it, but let me double check, Dave.
I thought at least we had that, but okay, maybe, maybe not. Cool.
And wait, wait, one more question, again, where will Lupita and I find this whiteboard? Is it on the city, it'll be on the city website?
We're gonna publish it on the city website for transparency, but you have a link to it. So it, the, the link has been updated with all of the checkmarks and everything that we did today, so you can just continue to use that link.
Okay, so the link that, the link that.
Cindy sent out.
Cindy sent is the link to keep, so don't, we don't delete that, don't delete that.
It won't be deleted, it, it lives in the cloud.
Okay.
And that way you can, you can cut and paste text from those, those yellow slips and things like that, so.
But no, but, but it can't be fooled with by folks who are not. It's in the clouds, but it's.
Yeah, it's a board work product at this point.
Okay. All right.
I mean, I guess if we wanted to be really careful, Charles, we, you, you could make a copy of the workspace. For, for Lupita and Sarah to take over on, and that way if they wanted to move things around, it wouldn't, we wouldn't see it. Because it would be their work from then on, but I don't know if that's.
I don't think you need, I just, I wasn't worried about what Lupita and I could do, I was more worried that if it's on the public website, that folks could. Could add their own input, and then she and I might get confused as to what actually was our input and what actually was the public's input. So I'm just trying to make sure.
We're just gonna publish a PDF version just to reflect the board's conversation today and how all the ideas were consolidated.
Okay.
Great.
All right, wonderful, all right, so I think we have what we need, Lupita, I'll send you this long. Court reporting notes I've taken, so that we're both operating from the same document, and David, I hand it back to you.
All right, well, thank you so much, Sarah and Lupita, for this really productive meeting. And I'm looking forward to seeing you all on the second of December, and we'll look forward to seeing that draft, good luck on that. And have a great Thanksgiving holiday, everybody.
Thank you, Sarah and Lupita.
Thank you all, bye.
And thank you, Jacob, Lori and Charles for, for supporting us.
Have a great weekend.
Cheers.